So that will be here. So the Treasurer's Report is in, is attached to the agenda, and we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things to report. One, I'd share with the Board that secondary accreditation, which is a NDE requirement, was completed this last week. I'm pleased to report that we did, we did pass all those requirements. We've been accredited now all of our secondary schools until the year 2020. I will share with you that they found good things, but they also found, found things we can work on. And so we'll be bringing back some of those, some of those items that we need to work on in the future. I will share with you that some of the things that came up is the 167 external reviewers visited our sites. Rigor was something they did see as something we're continuing to work on and develop, which has kind of been a constant conversation at our school board table. But regardless, they also saw some good things too, so I wanted you to be aware of that, that we did complete that. We are accredited by Advance Ed, which works with NDE, so we met all those expectations. And thanks for the secondary schools for all the work they did on that. Today, we had a celebration of a Microsoft partnership. As you know, we're moving away from first class and to 365. Also, as you may or may not know, part of that partnership is a trainer of trainers for tech leaders across the district. We had the Vice President of the Microsoft Corporation here at North High today. That's a pretty big deal. And so we were able to do a podcast with the Vice President, and we are encouraged that we may be able to get Bill Gates in the future. That's our hope. And of course, we know one of his better friends is right here in the city of Omaha, so we're hoping maybe we can do a combined event where during the Buffett Teacher Awards, which happens this spring, that maybe we'll be able to get Mr. Gates as well to join us in a celebration of our high-quality teachers, which goes right into the next comment I wanted to make. Just a reminder to the Board, we'll be sending a note to all of our teachers on the Board's behalf. March 3rd is Nebraska Teacher of the, I guess, Teacher, Teacher Day, Nebraska Teacher Day, Celebration of Nebraska Teacher Day. So that's March 3rd, it's coming up just right around the corner. And lastly, I just wanted to give the Board an update. The, the Board had voted and given us direction to, to move forward with an SIG, a School Improvement Grant for Waucondae, which was also covered in the Omaha World Held. Wanted you to know that we are actively meeting with teachers from Waucondae, which is part of their grant requirement. We're also meeting with OEA leadership. We had two of their leaders in our last meeting. We have a meeting, another meeting coming up on Monday. We're also meeting with, and have talked to the PTA individuals. And we're really actually looking forward to the opportunity of creating some innovation around this model. An opportunity to have dollars infused with it to create an innovative team that's going to come back with what could be a pilot for the future of this district as well. So I'm very hopeful that that continues to move forward in that way. And I wanted you to know that I think we're moving forward as, as well as we can. As I mentioned in the article, I think my quote was, "There's some inherent anxiety with change of this nature." That's natural. But on the other hand, if we create a model and create a pilot that serves our young people better, at the end of the day, that's what we're supposed to do. That's what we're supposed to do. So, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Board member reports at this time. Does anyone have anything? Ms. Williams?
Well, it's not anything super fancy, but I had the opportunity to spend Friday the 13th, pre-Valentine's Day, in five classrooms. Sugar-filled, early out, and who plans these early outs for these Valentine's Day things? We got, I got to talk to somebody about that. However, I had the opportunity to spend time in five classrooms, and it's always such a invigorating and high-energy experience. So I just, I'm putting it out there for any of our teachers or across the district, or any buildings, reach out to your Board members and invite them to some of these fun, great, amazing things, because we want to see the fruits of the, the hard decision-making that we're doing. And so I'm going to put it out there. But I am booked for March 2nd, which is the Dr. Seuss Day of reading. So I've, I'm fully booked that day, but there are eight other Board members that hopefully will be available to read to a class. I just am putting it out there. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also mention something from Mrs. Fay. Just a reminder that the Central High School Roadshow is tonight at 7:00 PM and Saturday at 2:00 and at 7:00 PM. And I believe on Saturday, there's a spaghetti feed in between the two performances. If you've never been, it's a truly wonderful talent show put on by the students, and it's been going on for this 101 years. So that makes it very fun. I also just want to share both from Mrs. Fay and from my perspective, the wonderful job that the music staff did with the All-City Music Concert. And so this year, I know it was split into three, and it was in a much different venue, but the one thing that I heard, having it here at TAC when I was leaving, was all the parents who said, "Wow, the acoustics, the ability to hear, the beautiful sounds that were there." And so I just want to compliment the staff for their preparation of the students who were selected from all over the district to participate and for the wonderful performances they, they did. I think it's a, it's a great tradition that Omaha Public Schools has continued to have. And so I know that my family always thoroughly enjoys it, and so I appreciate everything the staff does on that. Oh, Ms. America?
Sorry. I just wanted to echo the appreciation that Superintendent Evans expressed to our secondary school for the work they did going into our accreditation review. With Mrs. Gadding, I had the opportunity to go to our kickoff event that we held for the accreditation visit. And it was just a really good experience to sit down and talk with some of our secondary school principals and other faculty members about just the numerous hours of work that went into the preparations they did to be ready for this really important accreditation visit. So again, thank you to everyone that was a part of that.
Great. If there are no other comments, Mr. Ray, do we have any public comment forms?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
There is a motion from Ms. Williams. Is there a second? So there's a motion from Ms. Williams and a second from Mrs. Underwood to approve the consent agenda that is before us. Any abstentions?
Yes, I will be abstaining from I-12.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second, and Mr. Wayne will be abstaining from I-12. Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. Moving on to discussion and action items. The first item is information item J-1A, Critical Friend Update.
Hi, President Gadding, Superintendent Evans, and Board members. I'm pleased to be here. Thank you for having me. As you know, I was here recently for my second of three Critical Friend visits. This is a very short overview of the findings and recommendations from that visit. As you remember, I was here the first time to do the Critical Friend Visit, which is focused on the district's implementation of the strategic plan. That was in October, late October of 2014. At that time, I reported that OPS is actively and aggressively implementing the strategic plan, but needs to manage several threats to implementation. I also identified several initiatives that were taking place relative to the strategic plan across 10 areas, which I won't go into detail right now. And while I pointed out that these initiatives don't even capture all the work taking place in the district, it really represents a significant and impressive change process that the district is going through right now and is really focused on implementing the strategic plan. I did, however, note that there were six threats to implementation. I'll go through them very quickly, but they had to do with, first of all, principals feeling overwhelmed. I can go into more detail if you need, if you need me to. But first of all, that principals felt overwhelmed by the pace of change taking place in the district. Number two is that other stakebo, excuse me, other stakeholders, including the Board, but also teachers and the general public, feel either uninformed about the strategic plan, or that the implementation of the plan is being done to them and not with them or for them. Number three, I noted that failure of the bond initiative, which is happily passed, congratulations, would have really harmed the district's ability to implement the strategic plan. Number four is that the work groups that are focused on action planning and implementing of the strategic plan, various strategies, were still, hadn't broken down all the silos as of yet, that there were still some siloization taking place. Number five is that while still in the very early stages of implementation, school stat was being viewed by principals, especially as punitive and overly bureaucratic. And number six, that the principal, excuse me, principal coaching visits are viewed by many teachers as ineffective and perfunctory. These were the threats to implementation from my last visit in October. And I outlined, based on those threats, I outlined six recommendations, which I can go through, but I was going to just move on to my findings from the next report, if that's okay. I'm happy to bring those up if there's any, if there's any questions. Based on my last visit, I'm really pleased to note that the district continues to actively implement the strategic plan with a focus that I believe can really be a model for the country. There's much of the work taking place that I noted, most of the work taking place that I noted from my first visit has moved forward. And the district, with one notable exception, which I'll go into, has implemented or is actively working to implement all the recommendations I outlined, and really trying to mediate all of the threats that I outlined as well. The one exception is that the feedback that I received from virtually all stakeholders with whom I met, and videos of the school board meetings that I have watched, suggests that the school board is not focused on the strategic plan and is deeply divided. And this now serves to be the major threat to implementation of the plan. Furthermore, according to stakeholders, some Board members behave in a manner that many of my interviewees described as unprofessional, and that undermines successful implementation of the strategic plan. This is obviously very difficult for me to report to you. As you know, I'm heavily invested in the implementation of the strategic plan and have really, really feel committed to its success. And making this report is, is difficult for me. So as you know, addressing this implementation is a real challenge. It requires a lot of building, I believe, of personal relationships, some training, which I know you all are, are doing and planning to do more of, and focus on, on the important work that the strategic plan has outlined. In addition to the challenge with the focus of the Board, I also outlined three additional areas that I, that I would recommend require additional attention. Excuse me. First and foremost among those three, I outlined coaching and professional development. The work that's gone on due to the strategic plan around the coaching of teachers, in my opinion, has huge potential to serve as probably the largest lever that the district has to drive instructional improvement, which is why we're all here. Right now, though, based on feedback I've received from administrators, from principals, from teachers, and others, there's still concern that the coaching visits are being viewed as compliance-oriented, as opposed to an opportunity for professional growth. There's also concerns around professional development, which again have been, started to be addressed through the creation of a professional development committee, that there's still some turfism existing in the administration related to who's responsible for different types of professional development. Some of that, I think, is just because we're going through a major change process, and I think that's a result, but it bears, it bears attention. So I have a few specific recommendations outlined, which maybe I'll pass on unless there's questions about it later, because they get, they get down into, into the weeds a little bit. The second area that I recommended for further attention is the working groups. There's, as you know, four working groups related to cross-departmental teams related to implementation of the strategic plan. And these are moving forward well. There were some concerns raised with the working groups about coordination and leadership across those four, across those four groups. So the district has already identified an administrator to serve in that capacity. He's beginning, I, I think he's already begun, if not, I know he's beginning very soon. And he will also be overseeing, providing some oversight and supervision to the staff process as well, which I think also requires some, some supervision. So again, I have some more specific recommendations that I'll, I'll just sort of let you read at your, at your convenience. Third and finally, is the area around teacher and principal engagement. Again, this was an area that I had identified early in my first visit as a threat to implementation. The district administration has done quite a bit that's been noticed by teachers and principals and appreciated by teachers and principals, to engage them more authentically in implementation of reforms and strategizing for the rollout of reforms. There's still some work to be done in this area. So again, there's some specific recommendations around engaging teachers and principals early on in the process of major reforms. And one of the examples I gave was, I know you all have been discussing the SIG application. Getting teachers involved early in that process and having them contribute to the development of the strategy and not just reacting to the strategy that's been created, I think would go a long way, not only towards effective implementation, but I think it would also build a greater trust when, with regard to the negotiations that are currently underway with the teacher's contract. So that's a high-level overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Thank you very much for coming back and spending
My pleasure.
... several days here and, and taking a look at the things that needed to be done. And, and thank you for sitting in on the training that we just had, which I think was a great starting place for communication on how we can be effective as a Board.
It's my pleasure. And I would just like to note, this isn't in my report, but I've said this to many of you individually, and then hearing it again here, that the level and scope of change that this district is going through, I would argue, I don't know of another district in the country that's undergoing this level of, and pace of change. And really, you all should be commended. So I, I want to temper my major finding with that note, with that overall finding and that feedback. Amazing work is being done. Lots of cheeses are being moved, and I really appreciate the opportunity to support the, to support the work that, that you all have been engaged in. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a note, I know I personally, and I think staff in general, and I think community as well, gain something from having an external party come in and meet with teachers, principals, community members, Board members. Your perspective helps, helps us. I do think that the pace of our change is part of what some of the comments are deriving from, which it, it still gives us reason to look at it with seriousness, which is why we changed some things after your last visit. And we, we moved school stat, which is a pretty significant process on how they look at all their school improvement plans, and how we look at all the subgroups reflected in those, and creation of goals around that. We stepped back, and now we're in a pilot phase and asked for volunteers. And we had 11 brave souls, I believe, 11 schools, I think, that are going through that. But I think that was a good decision, because there's a certain amount of tension you can put on the system that if you go over that level, I think you end up causing more damage than good. And so your comments, I think, actually helped us. We also created a teacher advisory group from your comments in our last visit. We also created a principal advisory group, which is also helping. In fact, I hear some of those same comments about how we create more efficiency and how we utilize our tools for, whether it's coaching visits. I know the, the principals are concerned about the amount of time and energy it takes on, teacher appraisal. All of those pieces become good conversation points, which actually are conversation points that are happening across the state of Nebraska, too, with the entire state looking at, for example, the teacher appraisal system. There's legislative action and NDE conversation that I think is going to impact part of our strategic plan that also moves from that research and calibration phase to looking at other more in-depth pieces. So your, your comments, I think, are reflective of that pace of change. And I, but I still appreciate them. I think it gives us a little different perspective from a step back, and I think that's helpful. And it's helpful for our community to understand that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Seeing then, whoops.
I guess I'll comment and say I, I thank you for the feedback. I think, and I guess I'm putting in perspective, because I was here on the old Board, and Mrs. Fay isn't here. In part, in 2013, everything changed because there was what was deemed a rubber-stamp board. And then since then, we had a strategic plan, which we all got behind and was unanimous. We had a bond initiative. So while I don't see the threat quite as big, I think it's just new that now we're getting into major issues and major discussions that Board members are disagreeing. But I think it's a healthy new, and maybe the pendulum has swung too far. And I think in time, this, this Board, who's really only been around for a little over a year and a half, will find its niche and find its comfort level of, of issues and dialogue as everybody gets to understand each other. And that takes time, meeting twice a, a month in a meeting, discussing some serious education, whether you deem it reform or initiatives, touch on a lot of different touchpoints for people. So I tell people that, you know, you don't understand the sun unless you have a little bit of the rain. And I think that's what's going on here. It's growing pains as a Board, and I think we'll all move forward, and I have the most confidence in this Board.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I would like to echo some of Mr. Wayne's commentary. And I, and I think that, you know, we have really started great with our meeting prior to this, is really having more of that board development piece. And that's something that, you know, it's very important for me, and I know it's for most of my colleagues, it's very important. So it's, I think that's something that public should, should also know, is that we're, we are a young Board, and we are new to this relatively. And we are working through those growing pains publicly. But I also think there's some healthiness to it. You don't want the rubber stamp, or you don't want all in disagreement. And so I think that's something that we're charged with, is really building our relationships with each other to have a more beneficial working relationship. And so it is something that I think we're aware of, and we are working on, hence our board development today. And so looking forward to everyone seeing us grow and being able to reflect back, hey, remember when, but look where you are, and look at what you've accomplished, and look at where you are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Oh, whoops, I'm sorry. Mr. Scanlon?
This is the second of the three visits.
Yeah.
When does, when is the third one?
Late spring, so April, May.
Okay. And then I don't remember, did we have any, any visits scheduled for next year, or anything like that?
No, not at this, not at this time.
This is, okay, it's just these three that were in the contact?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll move on to J-1B, Bond Program Update. And this is listed either as just an information item or as an action item. So we'll get all the information. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the information item on, yes, sorry.
Thank you, sir. It's going, it's going. Thank you, thank you. Well, we appreciate everybody allowing us to take a couple of minutes just to provide kind of a quick bond update. I'm going to use my partner. Gabrielle Mack's going to speak to one of the slides, and I'm going to take, take on the other slide. So jump right into it. Really where our, where the bond program is now, is we're, we're shifting some of our focus, not all, into a lot of the project-specific coordination components that occur. So many of the first few months were used to establish program processes and procedures, master budget schedule, cash flow, all of those different components. Recently, our team's focus has, has started to shift into the day-to-day conversations with principals, designers, building staff, maintenance staff, buildings and grounds teams, on the actual coordination of what's going to occur at each location. So that's really where the, a lot of the focus has been, on the Quick Start projects, which, if you recall, are the, the projects that we're really targeting to start and complete this summer. Heavy infrastructure, life safety, technology projects. And then POC is also involved in that, and there's been a lot of phasing discussions going on, on, again, how we would move students inside the school during construction. Our designers are a big part of that, making sure all the utilities are coordinated through the build. So that's really a quick start. Group one, we appreciate, sorry, we appreciate the approval given for the design firms. With that, the, the process over the last few weeks with Group one has really been the architectural selection process. And we had three days of interviews with many different firms, and all the principals involved in those projects were engaged and actively participated in that interview process, which, which I think provided some really good learning opportunities for just some of the vernacular that's used and will be used over the course of the next couple of years inside of each project. So now in Group one, we'll move into probably the second week of March with the, the Assembly of the EdSpec Committee, and working with the principals on coordinating all of those meetings. And then we'll be back to present EdSpec documents and request approval at a later date for those projects. Group two is really the, in the active process of the procurement of the selection. We just received proposals from several different design firms for those projects, pardon me, and we'll be evaluating those, again, engaging all the principals at those locations. We asked them to take a look at the proposals, not that they have to, to scan them and study them, but we want to have them have some awareness when we ask them to come and interview what the firms are somewhat about. And I believe March 4th is the date that we have penciled in or scheduled to do interviews for Group two. And then based on that, we want to come forward on the March 16th Board Meeting with a, with a recommendation of approval for the design firms for Group two. And then there's a little bit of, about of a month break between the next group. So we'll, we'll kind of, everyone will take a breath, and we'll, we'll kind of do a head count and make sure everything's good. One other thing I wanted to, to just mention briefly is we, we had our CBOC kickoff meeting, which we had great participation from. It was, it was a really good discussion. Much of the meeting focused on just organizationally how the CBOC group would work, who they would call for questions or concerns. We, we decided on a standing meeting time to, to try to accommodate as many as we could. So that was a big success. You know, they, they definitely identify, they, they want to make sure that we're accountable, you know, the Jacobs group and the district, and they're going to hold us to that. So I think we're all, we're all really excited to, to rise to those challenges and provide them as much information as we can. With that, I'm going to ask Gabrielle to...
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the Board for taking time out of their very busy schedules to spend some time with our inclusion team. Our inclusion team includes Sharif Luaru, your Director for Equity and Diversity, Gleith Aglisby, who's on our Jacobs team, and myself. And we have been working on the assessment process, as you're aware of. And frankly, since visiting you last, have been quite busy. And I'd like to share just a few highlights with you this evening. But thank you all for your time and for giving us the information that will hopefully will help craft a plan that will align with both your vision for what we're doing and, and the mission of this organization. So there are a few Board members who may have not had a chance, and we just want you to know, although we've kind of completed our, we will be open to any discussions with any Board members with regards to this issue. So thank you very much. Since visiting you last, we've been spending a great deal of time out in the community and working not only to do our Board, to do our assessments for our plan, we've also been really working with stakeholder engagement, getting out to understand the community, getting to visit with contractor organizations, contractors themselves, organizations that are supporting economic inclusion around the city of Omaha. And it's been wonderful. We've been embracing We've been embraced with a welcoming spirit, and we've received a great deal of information that we believe will be helpful as we move our process forward. Our process forward is an understatement. As you can tell, the Quick Starts and the Phase One or Group One projects have been in solicitation process, and we did not want to lose sight of those opportunities. We wanted to take every opportunity. So we have also been engaged in the selection process and working to get our inclusion, economic inclusion, integrated into those processes. And I just want to say, I am just thrilled and excited about the response that the architectural and engineering community has come back with. We have inclusion plans, we have real substantive plans in terms of not only businesses being used, people being hired, and some really exciting proposals around engaging student learning in STEM and other related construction and engineering-related professions. So we are going to be looking forward to sharing some of that with you in the future as we finalize negotiations with all of our consultants. But I really want to really reach out to all of them and let them know how pleased we are with the kind of response we get, and we look forward to their partnership. The other aspects of what we've been doing has been really to create or to work under Dr. Turnquist's strong leadership with regards to this issue. And I just want to publicly thank her for her leadership on it. And what has happened is, is we really are working with the entire organization to create change around procurements, around creating a welcoming environment for all businesses that want to do business with OPS. And that's been impacting a number of the group man, groups and divisions within your organization. But I can say that there has been nothing but cooperation, and we're really pleased with the direction. And I think you're going to see a lot of positive things coming out of those meetings and from those groups. Last but not least, we were, in an attempt to really get out in front of some of these consultant opportunities, we decided that we needed to open up our statement of qualification, our qualifications process, to keep it open for a long period of time so that there's no deadline. So that allows people to really qualify for opportunities as they become available or as they know about them. As a result of that, we had an outreach event here in this building, in your auditorium, last Thursday. And we thought maybe we'd get about 25 or 30 business people and folks interested in this. We had 63 individuals come. We did an evaluation afterwards, and the evaluation demonstrated on a five-point scale, four to five was about the average that we received. And I think it had a lot to do, the comments were about transparency of information, sharing our schedule, sharing what opportunities and how we're going about it, and, and most importantly, the opportunity to network with each other. And so we created an environment where firms got to know each other, and as a result, we're already seeing some additional teeming opportunities with diverse, small, and disadvantaged businesses. And last but not least, as we're in the process of revising and trying to make sure that our language, the words that we use as we go, as we're procuring consultants and contractors in the future, we really appreciate the work that we've been doing with your legal staff, Megan, and Attorney Scott Dye, who's been making sure that we're staying within the realms of legal and constitutional law. So I just want to thank all of you, thank the team that we've been working with, and really appreciate the support that we've gotten. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Underwood?
I didn't miss, oops, sorry. I didn't necessarily have a question for you, but I just wanted to mention to my board colleagues that I visited Norris Middle School a couple days ago, and, actually, it was yesterday. And I just wanted to mention that it was just, it was at a staff meeting, and we had representative from Jacobs, Mark Summers, and then Mark Warnicki from OPS as well. They just wanted an update on what was going on with the bond and the schedule. The staff in that building has been waiting for a long time for facilities upgrades, and so they just kind of wanted an update. We gave a quick little 15-minute update, and it was really great. So those guys are available if you ever need them for any schools that are curious within your sub-districts.
Ms. Williams?
I have two things. First, I just, I'm, I'm all about this inclusion. We talked about it at our, our training that we finished. But I, I just, again, I can't thank this team enough. We have a very unique opportunity to have an inclusion process that the city, the state, actually, actually, that could be a national model. And so this is a huge piece of, of, you know, what OPS means to our community. I just, I can't thank you all enough for the work, and I'm excited to see what comes from that. And I just wanted to address you on that. My comments, questions are more for district staff. And as Mrs. Underwood was just talking about, a team visiting Norris, I've had this conversation directly with Superintendent Evans and Mrs. Godding as well. Where I'm finding some frustration is, is the communication between what's going on with the bond at the schools and what's been laid out and what's presented to us, there's a challenge. I feel like if I don't know what's going on, how do I directly respond to my constituents or the schools or the staff or the parents in my district? And it's, it's nothing personal. However, this is an initiative that we've worked hard for, and we, as a board, should know this information. And so my request is that whatever decision is being made from the initial timeline that we have been presented, that we are in the loop, whether it's a daily email, it's a weekly email, something, it's just been brought to my attention that something we all were understanding that would happen 15, 16 is now being pushed back, and we're hearing from staff and community, no, that's not what's happening. Why are we the last ones to find out? And so if it's happening in my sub-district, and I believe I'm a fairly active board member in my district and in my community, if I don't know, I can't imagine what the rest of my colleagues don't know. And I, I think that if we're talking about communication and transparency, this can't happen again. Again, I've, I've stated very clearly to Superintendent Evans, and again, it's, it's never personal, this is business, but we're in the business of making sure we're informed of what's going on. This is a huge opportunity, but how do we have that communication with our families or with the staff? And, and we need to do better. And, and, you know, for me, this, this cannot happen again. It cannot. It absolutely cannot. I can't sell the great things that we're doing in the district if I don't really know what's going on and what the timeline is. And so I hope that the decisions that are being, are being made are for the benefit. They're not coming from an external department. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of players in this game. But at the end of the day, this bond issue is something that the board stand, stood firm on and said, we want to do this. And I think there's a due diligence to us, that we have a, a knowledge of what's going on. I don't want to know the day-to-day, but I would like to know, hey, this school is going to be changing to this, or they're going to do this on this day, or this is the new timeline. I just think that's, I don't think that's, being too in the weeds. I think it's a request that I think it should be honored. Again, if, if we don't know what's going on in those districts that, that we represent, how do, how do we talk to the community? How do we do our due diligence? And I know several others have had the same questions. And so again, Mr. Evans, you know, you gotta, you gotta figure out what that communication line is so that we're aware, because we're, it's not just students, it's also the community, it's also organizations that are so deeply involved in the school. And you have to give them that time to make sure that they know what they're going to do to work with these students. So I'm, I'm finished, but you have a directive. Thank you.
So, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Evans, and he can share with us what he's going to do next.
Appreciate that, Madam Vice Chair. We actually did discuss this, and we had a meeting, actually, this morning, 8:00, with a whole multitude of staff, to make sure everything was lined up and that we are going to communicate better. This is no excuse, but I think part of, some of our challenge is, we've got some moving parts that aren't in place. The student assignment plan has some implication for some of this movement. And so we've got to figure out how to communicate to you as that group is communicating, because it, if you distribute students differently, then how you move students with programs that are part of this bond issue, it's implic, it has implications for it. So again, no excuse, because what we ought to be saying to you is, here are the options. If SAP does this, then it looks like this. If SAP does Y, then it looks like this. And so that's our quest, and I, we, we were pretty clear this morning. I, I don't know if I said direct, I may have said directive like Vice Chair did with me, because we, we wanted to make sure we were on the right, right direction, too, because I think that's our goal, too. I, I know it's Dr. Turnquist's goal, I know it's the Jacobs staff goal. We want to keep you informed, and we want to keep folks informed. So when we have a hiccup, we need to own it, and we need to find out how to make it better. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I also want to note that the CBOC meetings are open to the public, and so anyone who wants to attend is welcome to attend those. And just for the record, they are the fourth Wednesday of every month from 10:00 to 11:30. So the fourth Wednesday of every month from 10:00 to 11:30, and they are held in Room 5062, which is up on the fifth floor. Just so that everyone knows that they can be a part of that, even if they're not on the actual CBOC team, that you can actually go and listen and, and be a part of hearing what's happening around our entire community with the bond project. And I also want to add that we added one more person to CBOC who had applied for the position, and it was just an oversight, and I take full responsibility. We had missed putting a retired teacher on, and so we've added Cheryl Richardson, and it's my understanding she's very excited to join the team and be a part of CBOC as well. So I just wanted to note that and to thank Matt and Katie for being at the last meeting and being able to participate in that and give the board's input from, to represent all of us. So thank them for their time with that. Does anyone have any other questions on this? Great. If not, thank you so much. Thank you for all the work you're doing. We appreciate it. So at this time, we will go ahead and move to the next item, which is J2A, Resolution Authorizing Issuance and Sale of Bonds. We have a number of documents that are on the agenda, so I'm not sure who's kicking that off, so I'll let you guys go ahead and come on up, and we'll take the information. And if, when we are completed with that, if everyone feels like they have enough information, we'll call for a motion. I will call for a motion. If there is none, then we'll have that at the next board meeting. There is a lot of data there for everyone to look at, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you all.
Okay. Again, I would say for the record, Bruce Lefler, Meredith Investment Corp. in Omaha. Just to put an information start on this, I did want to update the board from our last meeting. We did get confirmation from both rating agencies on the rating on the outstanding or for the bonds of Omaha Public Schools. Standard and Poor's maintained the AAA rating, again, which is the highest rating that bonds can have. So we were glad to get that news from them. And Moody's, and Moody's confirmed the AA1 rating that's outstanding on all of the district's debt for its general obligation bonds. But in addition to that, a little piece of good news is, they upgraded the district's limited tax bonds, which were rated at a AA2, which is one notch below the general obligation bonds. They've upgraded that to the AA1 rating for the district's limited tax bonds. And it's, I would just very briefly say, is reflective of the, their opinion on the financial status of the district, the, the fund policies, as they mentioned, that the district currently has in place on the management of their funds and their reserve policies, and currently the, the reserves that the district's able to hold in place. So that was good news to get those confirmations back from both of those rating agencies. I would, if I, if we haven't made that information available, we will make sure that it's available as of tomorrow. We'll get copies of those rating reports so the board can review all the good news that's, that's plugged into those.
And again, for the record, Parker Schenkin, 1700 Farnham Street. And I'll just go ahead and take a brief walk through the documents that are in your stack, and then you all can discuss and ask questions and make a determination as to how to proceed. The principal document that's in the stack is the authorizing resolution, and it does several things, and we've pointed most of this out in prior discussions. It authorizes the issuance and sale of $141 million of bonds. It authorizes the public sale and the acceptance of bids after that public sale within parameters that are set in the resolution. It appoints a paying agent registrar, includes mechanical provisions for the bonds relating to their DTC functions and other, the mechanical pieces of the issuance, delivery, and payment of the bonds that we've discussed before. It authorizes the levy of tax to pay the bonds, includes tax-exempt related covenants, creates the funds, the sinking funds, the project funds that are going to be the inflows and outflows of the funds for the bonds. It approves importantly two of the other documents in your stack, which are the notice of sale and preliminary official statement, which are the principal documents that allow the sale to be conducted and the bonds to be sold to the ultimate bondholders. And it affirms your continuing disclosure undertaking under what's SEC Rule 15(c)(12), which is the rule that obligates the, the district to continue to provide informations periodically to investors. And that's, that's really a brief run-through. I'd be happy to take any questions or any discussion that, that the board might want to address.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't think there's any questions. So if there's no questions, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the resolution that's in front of us on the district's authorizing the issuance and sale of the school district's general obligation bonds? Seeing none, then we will move that to the next board meeting, and we will have it on as an action item and give everyone time to read through everything and do that. Is that, that's what I'm seeing? So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to J3 and J3A Committee of the Whole, Policy 8150. Mr. Ray can bring it up. I can just talk briefly to this. We have talked a little bit about this before, and I know that I talked about it in my nomination speech, which was taking a look at the standing committees that we have. And Ms. Williams and I sat down and went through the existing standing committees, which we really haven't met on, they were part of the work groups. And we took a look at how we could make those more effective, and certainly discussed some of that tonight in our training. So the Accountability Committee really focused on the evaluation of the superintendent, the secretary to the board, and then performing a board self-evaluation. So really took a look at also committees that are in place in other large school districts, and this is one of them. It doesn't meet year-round, but it certainly meets during times of semi-annual and annual performance. The Budget and Audit Committee, which would meet certainly during the first part of the calendar year to get ready for the budget and audit for the fall. And then the Communications Committee, which, you know, one of the things that I looked back at was the document that we were all given, which was the communications audit when we started on the board. And granted, this was written for a different board, but there's still wonderful things in here that would help with communications for any board, I think. And then just thinking about communications on an ongoing basis, and some of the things that we talked about in training tonight as far as decision-making, and some of those types of things related to communication. And then finally, a Policy Committee, that once we get through this big set of policies that we're working through, and we're, we're getting there, to really think about developing policy and recommendations back to the rest of the board that might help us stay focused on the strategic plan and other items. So I will open it up to discussion at this time.
I move to approve the first reading of Policy 8150.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Or second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wayne?
As it reads right now, I would be, I would be voting no. I'm, I'm not in favor of extending Committee, Communications Committee. I think it's an ad hoc committee to develop a communication strategy and a communication plan, and maybe after it's developed, that should be the role of the community. And maybe after it's developed, that should be the role of the community, the board as a whole, to see if that communication plan and strategy is being implemented right. But I'm just not in favor of a committee for communication. Because the way it's written, I'm not sure if we're talking about board communication. I'm not sure if we're talking about district communication. And I think district communication should be led by Mr. Evans. And board communication should be driven by a policy that we have, not an actual committee who regularly meets. It should be a board who revamps it. And if there's an issue with the policy that is crafted out of that ad hoc committee or the policy committee, then it would ultimately be referred to the policy committee to craft a new policy around the communication strategy, if it's in policy. So, I think we would be doubling up. So, I'm just not in favor of the Communication Committee at this time.
And I did actually think about that as an ad hoc committee. But one of the, one of the things that we talked about was communication is always something that's ongoing. So, I don't necessarily think that it would be a committee that would be meeting by any means every month, but it's probably just one of those things in my mind that you should meet at least a couple of times a year to talk about where's your board communication? How are you engaging with your constituents? How are we making sure that those things are happening? Not from the role that the district plays, but from our role in communicating with each other and with the community. So, that was my thought on that. Ms. America?
I think you kind of just said what I was going to say. I, Mr. Wayne, I completely understand your concerns and I actually agree with most of them. But I do see a place for it as an actual committee. As President Gadding said, not a committee that necessarily is going to be meeting every month, but a committee that we can have in place to help develop that strategy for how our board is communicating information out and then meets on, you know, quarterly, semi-annual, what we decide is the best basis to maybe look at. Okay, maybe we decide we want to have a specific board newsletter that's emailed out to parents. Parents suggest that, actually. Maybe that committee, you know, is meeting quarterly and looking at the number, how many people are getting this? How many are actually opening it? Are we requesting feedback? What does that feedback say to then recommend to the board? You know, these are changes that we might need to make. If we do have something in policy, maybe they're sending a referral to the policy committee of saying, hey, we've identified this issue. Can you take a look at our policy and revamp it? So, I do see it as a need for an actual committee.
May I respond to both?
Mr. Wayne?
I would think that, again, we would, we would create a policy and refer it to the policy committee. And as far as the data, looking at if we created a newsletter, I think that would fall on, I know, I know it's example, but I feel like that's day-to-day stuff that how are we communicating? That falls really directly on our board secretary right now. And we've already had this conversation in training where I think there needs to be some more support there for that communication. But an actual standing committee, I think it's an ad hoc to develop a plan, we implement. And then I think that's part of the board officer's job to see how are we communicating? And to me, that's part of the operations of the board. And I think that would fall on the board officers because ultimately, any policy that we have to change, we have to go through the policy committee if we, if we create that. And so, I don't think you have a standing committee. I think it's just an ad hoc committee and I won't continue to belabor the point. Thank you.
Sorry, are there any other comments on that? Mr. Vargas?
I'll keep it short. I mean, I agree and that was my initial thinking. I was like, I could see the connection and why we have the standing committee for all the other ones. But when I looked at that one, I was like, if we did everything right, kind of like you were creating a strategic plan, if you create a strong communications plan and then it is executed by our board officers in collaboration with the rest of us, we don't necessarily need to have it as a standing committee. Although I do agree that it's something that I hear we don't do a good job at currently and it's a need. I'm just not sure that the strategy is to create the standing committee, but more, because the, just creating the committee doesn't solve the problem. And then the committee can't make action on its own. It can make recommendations. So, I see it as the policy committee is really going to be the ones that are elevating whether or not the change needs to happen. But, you know, we could have an ad hoc committee that meets four times a year technically or just sort of say as needed. But yeah, that's kind of my thinking around that.
Ms. Williams?
So, communication is something that we're, we've been talking about since we've been here. I'm sure we're going to continue to talk about. I personally believe that we should have a Communications Committee. And just like we're, we may or may not put it as a board policy, we can always come back. Once we feel like we have really looked at communications. And I mean, I would rather have a committee that can meet quarterly and talk about communication, communication challenges between us, our constituents, our district, whatever that looks like, and be able to have that conversation with the whole board. And when we get to the point that communication is no longer an issue, because eventually, our communication is going to be fabulous and there won't be an issue with communication. And at that point, as a board, as policymakers, we can go in and change that policy. And so, I think it's, it's to our betterment to have a Communications Committee now. And we can always come back and say, we've done our due diligence and now the communications, we've set this up. Now, it's on the staff to follow through. We've created best practices. And I think that's where a Communications Committee would be beneficial, is to help us with some of those challenges and issues through this journey. And then we can remove that once we feel that we are there.
Any other comments? If not, roll call, Mr. Ray.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne? Williams?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Six I, one no.
Motion carries. We are going to skip down to J3C, Second Reading, Construction Manager at Risk, Policy 7003. Mrs. Neelis Bresch, please.
President Gadding, Superintendent Evans and members of the Board of Education, good evening. Before you is the policy again for second reading. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the policy? If not, is there a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 7003?
I move to approve the second reading of Policy 7003.
There's a motion for Ms. Williams to approve the second reading of Policy 7003. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Underwood. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. We're going to move to J3D, Bid Number 15-003, Broker Insurance Services. Mr. Die.
President Gadding, Board Members and Superintendent Evans. Scott and I outside legal counsel for Omaha Public Schools. Everybody would like to hear me, I think. I'm here tonight to review several items pertaining to the Broker Insurance Services, RFP. I'm first going to review the RFP process and some of the background of how we got to where we got today. And also then I'll review and the results of our review. By way of background, Omaha Public Schools has used the same two insurance brokers for at least the last 20 years or longer. Harriet Koch Company has provided insurance services, broker services in relation to liability insurance and workers' compensation insurance. Davis Companies have provided services with respect to property and bonding services. OPS has moved to a self-insurance model for workers' comp since 2005 and has been moved to a larger retention on liability insurance since 2011, both to save considerable amount of premium. Historically, the way that our brokers have been compensated is by commissions based on premium income to the insurance company. There are a number of services that are outlined in the RFP document that the insurance broker is to provide to the district. The duties are fairly specific. They're summarized here. They assess insurance needs and risks. They prepare insurance applications. They encourage carriers to submit quotes. They evaluate quotes from prospective carriers, recommend insurance placement and help with claims management. So, there's a multitude of duties to be performed. There has not been a bid or RFQ process since at least the early 1990s. Not certain about before that period of time. Basically, the insurance brokerage services were handled on an informal basis without a contract. And at that time, of course, there's no statutory requirement to bid these services and the board is free to decide how it wants to contract for brokerage services, so long as it's not acting in an arbitrary and capricious manner. After placement of the 2014-15 insurance policies, et cetera, the board asked the staff to undertake an RFP or RFQ procedure for the next upcoming bid renewal or insurance renewal, which happens in May of 2014. By way of background, to kind of differentiate between when we talk about bid, RFP, RFQ, a bid procedure, true bid procedures where you have a very specified item that you want a price for. For example, you're buying a car. If you're constructing a building, where you have a set of plans and specifications, you ask, what is the price for doing this work? And RFP, you tend to see those more in professional services where you say, give me a proposal for performing the service and also the price you'll charge. An RFQ process asks for qualifications. Tell us what your qualifications are to do this kind of work. Generally speaking, it is not, it's without a price and then the price is negotiated later. That's a process that OPS has traditionally used for architect selection, for example, as an example. The process that was utilized here was a combination of RFP, RFQ. We asked for proposals. We asked for prices. And then we asked for statement of qualifications for all of the proposers. There was a specific list of requirements that the proposers had to meet. The primary change in this arrangement versus the prior arrangement is that this arrangement, OPS pays a fee for the services to the broker, as opposed to broker receiving a commission from the insurance carrier. So, as a result, the theory was, was that the broker would then be focused solely on the interests of OPS by receiving a fee, have undivided loyalty to OPS and OPS would then know what their cost of those services would be very specifically. Obviously, the hope is, is that the premium income or the premium cost to the district will be less because of the fact that the insurance company does not have to pay a commission. Obviously, there's no guarantee of that, but we're confident that that will occur. The RFPs were submitted. All of them were timely submitted. All of them were responsive to the request. There were three submitted. Based on the response and so you understand the process, we had a two-year contract, which is the base contract. And there were two two-year options. So, ultimately, a total of six years if all options were exercised. Harriet Koch Company proposed a price of $68,000 per year. That was a flat price for every year, which if you extended the contract over the full six years, it would be $408,000. Davis Gallagher Agencies submitted a price quote, starting at $112,000. It increased in increments over the six years, ending at $129,839 for a total cost of $724,462. Once again, assuming the contract was extended for all six years. Aon Risk Services then also submitted a price of $120 with incremental increases over the six-year period, total price of $757,070, if all of the option years were extended. Once the proposals were opened, there was a four-person committee composed of staff members that evaluated and graded the RFPs pursuant to appoint process. They gave the Koch Company's proposal a score of 137. Davis Gallagher, a score of 130. And Aon Risk Services, a score of 126. As you can see from the bid amounts, there's a significant difference between the low bid and the second low bid. It's almost double in difference. When that happens, whenever you're conducting a bid on an RFP procedure, your concern is, is that the low bidder has made a mistake, has misread the bid document or has some other issue with the bid that might surface later if you enter into a contract. The last thing you want to do is contract yourself into a dispute. So, as a result of that, Megan Neelis Bresch asked that we undertake a review of the bid procedures with respect to establishing if there is a problem with the bid because of the price differential. We were not asked to re-review the bids because that's, excuse me, that's the job of the staff and the staff's ranking process. We were simply asked to look at the price submitted and verify that the price submitted was accurate and the services were going to be performed. In that process, we spoke with Lisa Leday-Davis from the Davis Companies and we also spoke to Scott Durbin. We also received email communication from both of them in that process. Based on that process, our conclusions were that the Koch RFP bid was compliant with RFP documentation. They affirmed to us that they intend to perform all services required of it in the RFP documents for the fee quoted. And of course, they affirmed that to us verbally. They affirmed that to us in email. And then, of course, the bid document that they sign, that they submit with the RFP, in the RFP response, requires them to agree specifically in writing that they will perform the services required in the RFP and that is signed by them. So, they have that assurance as well. We discussed with Koch how they came to the amount of the fee quote. They had, they, actually, the quote they quoted was less than the commission they earned in the prior year from placing the insurance they placed. They advised us, and I'm not speaking of school here, they advised us actually that their quote when they originally prepared it was higher than what they submitted. And then they revisited the process and decided to reduce it to $68,000 a year. They felt that the effort would be pretty much the same for all six years. So, they left the price flat for all six years. Based on that review, we did not find any basis for disqualifying the Koch RFP bid response based on the price issue. I think this is interesting. This conclusion is interesting. It indicates what happens sometimes in the RFP process. In the last insurance placement, the district essentially spent $166,218. It didn't just spend it directly. That came, that was commissions earned from policies, but obviously, somebody pays those commissions. The flat fee for the next year, if the Koch bid was accepted, would be $68,000. And there is a net difference of about $98,000, which would, once again, if you had a dollar-for-dollar reduction in the premium cost versus because of the fee paid to Koch Company and no commission by the agency. So, the board has, in monitoring this contract, obviously, the board can ask the insurance broker to monitor the savings potentially. The board also has the ability, if it is dissatisfied with the services. There are three potential remedies that the Board of Education would have. Number one, they could terminate the contract for cause if they felt the services were not being performed as required by the contract and that's in the bid documents. They can terminate the contract for convenience on 60 days' notice. Or they can decide not to renew the contract after two years and not exercise the second two-year, the second, third and fourth year and the fifth and sixth year essentially. So, the board is not without remedies. If the board is satisfied with the service, of course, it has the ability to extend it. If the board is satisfied with the service, of course, it has the ability to extend it out for six years. So we think that it did, the RFP process did achieve what the board, we presume, intended to achieve, and that would be to save money for the district. So I am available for any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? Mr. Wayne.
This is more for Mrs. Gotti. Why is our outside counsel presenting on this issue, not our procurement services department?
Because, well, I can, I can refer to Mrs. Nancy Shprash.
If I might answer that. Because of the discrepancy in the financial differences, I asked outside counsel to review on that. And so that's why outside counsel is presenting on that particular issue. Since I didn't conduct that investigation and Scott did, that's why he's presenting on this issue.
So is the issue being presented whether or not the procurement process was done right? Because, I mean, because he didn't check, he didn't go back and weigh anything. It was staff who weighed everything. So shouldn't, I guess, shouldn't staff be making this recommendation?
If, we have staff. Go ahead.
In other words, this, Mr. Wayne is the staff's recommendation. Because they did the evaluation, we were just asked to look at the premium difference and whether or not that presented any issues, because there was concern expressed that because the price is so low that somehow all services weren't going to be rendered. And so that was part of what we were investigating.
Thank you. And why did we do a RFP instead of a RFQ? Because typically, when we do professional services, whether it's Jacobs Contract, whether it's any other professional services, even our strategic plan, we did a RFQ to make sure we had a high quality of service to go after value contracting, not just lowest bid. So why did we go after an RFP versus a RFQ?
I'd have to defer to staff. That would be discretionary decision that staff would make. But one of the problems with RFQ, and understand, this insurance has to be placed by me, one, I believe, so that if you do go with an RFQ, then you have to go through the qualification process, then you have to negotiate a fee after that is done. And so that's, that's an involved process. And you don't have any way of testing the market for what these services would cost, because we wouldn't have any way to test that market, other than what we paid last year.
With that being said, our annual premiums are, what, $2 million, $3 million, maybe $5 million? I don't know. But I know they're probably over $1 million with all the property we have. Isn't it best we look for, I guess this is directed at staff again, isn't it best we look for somebody who's going to help lower the premium over six years in those value-based contracting versus just the lowest bid? And again, I go back to, we didn't do it with the Jacobs Contract. We didn't do it with, when we did our strategic plan. Those are both big professional services, and I would include insurance being that, considering our premium is anywhere between probably $2 and $5 million.
I think that effort has been made over the last 10 years, but as far as reducing cost of premiums to the district.
I'll answer your first question first, and that was that when I was asked to get a bid, it was a bid for quote. And in discussing with the purchasing department, it was determined that that was really called a bid for proposal, because it's bid for qualifications, whereas the RFQ. And I went with what they, what they determined and interpreted and what I thought you wanted, which was asking for pricing. We were going from a commission, which we really don't know and can't control what the brokers would charge the district. And that, that commission comes from what we are paying to the insurance company for our policy and for our policy coverage, to a system where we would determine through the quote, through the procurement process, what we chose to pay for the services that were offered to us. We would list out the services. There was no contract with our brokers. We had two brokers, neither one had a contract with us outlining what you expected, what we expected as district employees. Not that they didn't do a good job, they did. But this was a change in process and procedure. So I, I hope I didn't misunderstand you, but it was my understanding that what was being requested of us was to outline what was expected, find out how much what we expected would cost the district, and hopefully, as Mr. Die said, that amount of money would be taken off the bid, the quote for our policy payments. And we can't guarantee that. That is something the insurance company will decide to do. We will request that. The broker will request that be taken off. But that is, that is why we went with the direction we went, feeling that we were in more control, we were in more of the know of what exactly we were paying for and how we were paying for it.
And just so board members know, because this has been an issue, and if Lisa Dell was here, she will tell you that, and Harry Koch was here all the years, I was the only one ever to vote no every year. This has been an issue that I've had with for the last four years that I've been on the board. But it was my understanding that April, we were asking staff to do a RFQ. We talk about quality services. I think a RFQ allows our district to move into value-based contracting, because I don't, me personally, I don't care if it's double in fees, if over six years, we save $400,000 versus the lowest fee only giving us $100,000 in saving, because the net is we save more money. So I will be voting no, because I don't have enough information on the process, and I didn't go back and look up the April vote and the motion. But I just feel like I still don't have a clear understanding of RFQ, RFP, and the differences. I just think on high-quality services, a low bid is not necessarily bad, but I like to see a RFQ and a value process where our staff interviews people, has more conversations, and makes sure we get the, the one that we want. And it's no knock on, on Mr. Koch, Mr. Koch and a couple of boards that I'm on helps out the nonprofit world by giving great prices, so that's not it. It's no reflection on, on the insurance companies. It's just, I want to make sure we have a complete process in place. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Oh, I almost forgot. So I have a few, just a few things that run through my head. One, insurance is huge undertaking. And, you know, I've, I've requested, I appreciate the presentation, I'm still, you know, me individually, I still need more information. I think this, you know, it's, it's a lot of money, it's, there's just a lot to it. And I'm always going to, regardless of anything, I want to make sure that we're getting quality and not quantity. And I'm not sure where I'm at now, I guess because of the conversation just this evening. You know, I would rather feel like we're talking about, well, it's up to the broker if they do or don't. That makes me uneasy, very frankly. I want what's best for the district at the end of the day. You know, we're, we're looking at kind of the upfront cost, but I don't really have any information on kind of the backend and the savings. And I don't know if anyone here can help me with that, but, and that's where I struggle with. This is a huge, this is, this is huge. This is very important. It's a, it's an important decision to make. And I recognize the staff recommendation, but I also just have some internal struggles of understanding the process. And does this save, does this save us money? Is there, you know, can I, is there a definitive answer to that?
Can I say one thing?
Just, it's more rhetorical, but is there a definitive answer?
Scott has something to say to that also, but I want to make sure that you know, the reason the district has a risk manager is to be involved in that purchasing process, in that renewal process, to make sure that we get the most broadest coverage for the district at the least cost. So I don't see just the final recommendation from the brokers. I see four or five recommendations from the brokers. And oftentimes, they've been sent back to tell the insurance company that, that pricing or taking that piece of insurance coverage off is not acceptable. And, and they work with me on that, and I work with them on it. It's a, it's a team effort to go out and get those quotes for the district or those bids for the district in the pricing of the insurance and what's best for the district. They're not out there doing that alone. I may not be actually out there talking to the insurance companies, but I'm back here making sure that accurate information is being given to the insurance companies, accurate information, the best information, all the good things that happen here in the district, not just the headlines that some companies may see of us, but all of the good things that happen here. And so that's, that's what I do. That's part I do, to make sure that we all are, we talked about communication. This is a big thing, communication and making sure that we do the best for the district at the lowest cost.
And I don't, don't take offense, it's not about you or the job you do, but just a general statement that, you know, the may or may not, for me, that, that equals dollars that we could utilize other places. So it's not the recommendation. My, my, my concern is more the process and ensuring that we are doing our due diligence to the district. And so, I, I mean, it's just the process, and yes, we may not know, or we will know, maybe it's this year or when we look at renewal or what, however that looks, but that's where I stand. Again, I, I.
Can I clarify?
I clarify the recommendation. However, the N is for me. Is this, are we getting quality or are we getting quantity?
Hopefully, quality. But may I clarify, so I understand what you mean. Do you mean that we are not sure how much the insurance companies will respond to us paying the fee to the broker rather than them paying the commission? Is that the part you mean?
Well, I wish I could kind of rewind right now. It was something that you said about the brokerage and, you know, it, they may or may not. I mean, for me, that's, but this isn't my world. I don't, I'm not in insurance, and that's why this is a harder decision, because we really need a fully vetted conversation about insurance. It's great to have, I, I'm speaking for myself, I don't come from insurance, and you know what? I know what I need to know for my family insurance and personal, but we're talking big picture here. This is, this is more of a conversation than 11 Sides 10 Minutes, honestly. And it's, again, it's not personal, it's not your job, but it's just me questioning the process. I, I get that, but I also have a due diligence to speak my thought and feeling about this as we're having this conversation.
If I could respond on a couple of issues. One is, we do have the benefit of having three well-qualified firms submitting proposals. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't think you could say any firm is disqualified on this list. They're qualified folks. We went through literally hours and hours of preparing the RFP documents and getting them out. If we ended up in a situation where we did an RFQ, and you could have done an RFQ, that could have happened, but we had been in a position of then negotiating with a company without any basis of knowledge of what frankly, an appropriate premium would be, you have the risk of leaving the money on the table. So we ended up with an RFP process with a price that is significantly lower than what's being paid currently based, you know, fee versus commission. And so it appeared to me that it worked in that context. Regardless of whether you negotiated the contract or you did a bid process, you have no assurance you're going to get a lower premium. And that's going to be determined by the insurance companies. They may say, eh, it's a chance for us to make money. But the, the idea, if, you know, if you want to do it on a commission basis, and we should, this was not, was not the process we should have followed, we should just continue where we were. But that decision was made. I think if an insurance company looks, if I can pay $150,000 as a commission, or I can pay no commission and I want the business, hopefully, they'll see their way to reducing the premium to get that business.
Thank you, Mr. Die.
If I, if I could interject here, I just was able to pull up the, the resolution that was actually passed by the board last April 21st, and it, it calls, requests for permission to obtain the board, from the board, to seek solicitation through a request for quote for insurance brokerage and risk management services. And so I know that back after this passed, before the documents themselves were prepared to be sent out, there was a lot of discussion over what did that mean? And the conclusion was that the board order, that the board order, or that what was passed by the board was a request for a quote, which meant we needed a price from you on what it would be to do. In addition to that, there was discussion related to whether there was a commission model is a better model, or the, the fee-for-service model is the better model. And that was, the conclusion was the fee-for-service, because there's no vested interest on the part of the, even though both of our current carriers have negotiated with us for lower premiums or lower commissions than they would otherwise have received, in order to keep the business with us over the years, we decided to go with the fee-for-service model so that they would be incented to go out and help us reduce the premium cost. The one other thing I'd like to add is, the two carriers that we've worked with over the past 30 years have each helped in their own way, but what I'll mention about the Koch, since they're the recommended bidder, is the, over the years, the Koch premium has dropped, the amount of premium they've gotten has been dropping fairly significantly in large measure, because against their own interest, they advised the district to move to a self-insured model, and the self-insured model, they don't get any premium or commission on all that retention that we have. And as a result of that, we've seen some significant savings on the commission side by making that switch over the years. In the area, we've not made that switch in the areas that the Davis Companies, and I'm not saying that we can't make, or we can make that switch, I'm just saying, that's not an area where we've made, we've made the switch to being high-retention self-insured. So I just wanted to clarify that based on what, what was discussed on April 21st. And, and by the way, I would also say that to the extent that, that this process isn't what you envisioned, at whatever point you're ready to go forward into this process, whether it's two years from now or then, we'll do whatever you tell us to go out and do. Thank you.
So essentially, a year ago, we asked for a quote for services, and that's what you've brought back to us. And we're seeing the potential savings of $100,000 in premiums for this next year. I just want to make sure I'm recapping. And the thought being that if the premiums are based off of a non-commission, we may see reduction in premiums, which would make sense. Any other questions on this? Mr. Scanlon.
Is it, you know, regardless of the premiums, we'd still be paying less than the commissions by $100,000? Is that?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And so it'd be $200,000 over the period of the two-year contract that, as was explained, we could cancel or terminate if, if for cause or for within 60 days. So there is risk factors built into the contract in our favor that if there was any issue, then that could be addressed.
Yes. And the savings could actually be slightly higher, given the fact that historically, premiums don't decrease, they increase. And so the commission at a, on a fixed percentage basis would likely go up as well, based on whatever the insurance premium increase was there. So the, the savings we're showing of 198,218 for this, this year over last year assumes that everything's equal from last year. It could be, it could be significantly higher than that, depending on, on, on whether the commissions come down, or I'm sorry, whether the premium comes down because there's no commission, and based on what the increase in premium is.
Great. Are there any other questions? If not, at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from staff for the Harriet Koch Company Insurance and Financial Consultants, member of First Insurance Group, as the insurance broker for the district based upon the RFP process. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Williams. So there's a motion by Mr. Scanlon, a second by Ms. Williams, to recommend the Harriet Koch Company Insurance and Financial Consultants, members of First Insurance Group, LLC, as the insurance broker for the district based upon an RFP process. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Faye.
I'm going to be abstaining from the vote since I just came in and missed.
I'm going to be abstaining from the vote since I just came in and missed most of the discussion.
Okay. So, Mrs. Fay will abstain. And roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
No.
Wayne.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay abstain, I'm sorry. Fay.
Abstain.
Thank you. Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm having computer problems here, so just a sec. That's two no, one abstention, and five ayes.
Motion carries. We will now move to, thank you very much, J3B Legislative Update.
Since Marion was gone, I'm gonna... Oh, she's back. Great timing.
We waited for her for this. So, you're here for the last item on the agenda.
Because I was at road show, I'm not even going to pretend I was anywhere else, and if you don't have any, well, you need to go to road show on Saturday, 2:00 or 7:00 at Central High School.
And she was watching your child, so...
I was watching my child.
Great job.
And many other children.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you to the board for allowing me the opportunity to go to the road show.
Okay, Mr....
So, the legislative team met via conference call on Friday at 1:00. And what you have in front of you are the, and on the e-meetings, are the actions that the board has taken previously as well as recommended actions. And then, I think Mr. Lindsay is going to give us an update on, there were the committee hearings, there were some, a couple of big ones. So, let's start with the committee hearing update, please.
Yeah. First, on the four bills with recommended, or excuse me, five bills with recommended changes, or LB 78 to support, that's a bill that would allow school districts to, two or more school districts to pool for health insurance. LB 236 to oppose, that was, it's a bill that would allow retirement plans of the state or political subdivisions' benefits to be attached after judgment if the member has pled guilty to a felony or a misdemeanor and a civil judgment is rendered based upon those acts that gave rise to the criminal conviction. I think OSERS had some issues with it with regard to the constitutionality of it, whether it's federally preempted, and the state retirement system had the same concerns. And that's why the recommendation is to oppose. LB 370, which would require the state to request a Medicaid waiver to include treatment for dyslexia within the Medicaid program, the recommendation is to monitor that. LB 478 had been monitored and researched, that's been suggested, that moved to monitor, that would be allow bonding for ESU construction. And finally, LB 589 to move from monitor and research to support. That bill would direct lottery funds to, in fiscal year 16, 17, 18, 2 million to the Excellence in Education, excuse me, Excellence in Teaching Fund, 2 million to early education grants, a million to the Early Childhood Education Endowment Fund, a million dollars to school district reorganization. And the recommendation of the committee is to support that bill. Hearings this past week, OPS testified on three bills, LB 513 testified in support, that bill is a bill introduced at the request of OPS to allow school district property to be leased, to enter into leases for property that is not immediately needed or is not currently needed by the district. And David Kramer testified on behalf of the district. LB 595 was a task force on school construction assistance, and I testified on behalf of the district. And basically, my testimony was describing the, our facilities plan and providing the executive summary of that plan to the committee to give them some, to give the education committee some idea of what kind of assessments were taking place in a district such as ours. And then, LB 616 testified in opposition, that is, the Independent Schools Act, and I provided the testimony, which was essentially a reflection of the board vote on that bill. And that's the extent.
Just want to point out that on, before we take action on the four bills that are highlighted in yellow, the retirement bills, LB 447 and 448 have a hearing on March 5th, so we have another board meeting. We're still gathering research on that. The three board members who are on OSERS, that's Mrs. Gadding, myself, and Mr. Snow are meeting once we get a little bit more information. And then, we, the legislative team requested that we come back to you as OSERS trustees and make a recommendation on those two bills from OSERS. So, we'll get information out to you prior to the March...
5th.
No, the meeting, that week is the second or, I think. So, we'll get information to you prior to that discussion on the second so that you can be prepared to discuss and take action on the bills, the retirement bills that night, and then we'll move forward with testimony on those bills based on that. Does that make sense with the hearings being on the 5th?
So, does anyone have any questions regarding anything from Mrs. Fay or Mr. Lindsay? Mr. Wayne.
I move to approve the recommendations laid out by the legislative committee in the highlighted sections that are before us.
Second.
So, there's a motion from Mr. Wayne and a second from Mrs. Fay to move forward on the highlighted items as recommendations from the legislative committee on the attached document. Is there any, oops, is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Aye-dye.
Motion carries. Ms. America would like to just add one item for legislative, sorry about that.
Just because I'm not sure if our full board received the legislative notes email from NASB, but they did put out a call to action this week regarding LB 601, which is a bill that would kind of have two parts. It would say that school board members can't be employed by their school district in any type of capacity, but also says that the immediate family member, which is defined as a spouse, children, parents, stepchildren, or stepparent of a board member could not be employed within our district. And so, they're asking any board members that that would affect, which I didn't even think about it until now. We have a lot of student workers that help teach swim lessons after school or on the weekends or are involved in other capacities in our district that just because their parents on the school board wouldn't be able to do that under this bill. It really affects our rural neighbors, though, because in a lot of small communities, they're, the school district is one of the main employers, and it's hard to find people to run for office that aren't connected some way with the school district. So, they're just asking anyone who would be impacted by this or even could have been impacted by in the past or future to reach out to the education committee because the hearing on that bill is next week. So, I'd encourage you guys all, if that impacts you, obviously it does me somehow, to reach out to the committee members.
Thank you for that update. And when we were in Lincoln, Ms. America and I, at the legislative committee meeting for NASB, they did ask folks to raise hands, and half of the, half of the room from rural communities raised their hand that they wouldn't be able to be on the school board any longer if that was the case. So, that's a really great point. Thank you for bringing that up. At this time, I'd just like to draw your attention to the receipt of reports. We have K1, which is Accreditation District Exit Report. So, if you have any questions on that, I know I looked at it and have a few for Mr. Evans, please contact him with any questions that you might have on that, and then turn it over to Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel pending litigation and negotiations.
Let me remind, is there a second on that? Second. Motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. America. Roll call, please.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Aye-dye.
Motion carries. I was very anxious to get to closed session. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel pending litigation and negotiations. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at, we're going to, we're going to go, we're going to call this 8:22, but we're going to go into closed session at 8:30. It'll take a few minutes here.
In this edition of The Spotlight, there are many ways to honor veterans who have risked their lives to serve this country. Find out how a group of Benson JROTC students are saluting those military men and women. Plus, they're eager and cheerful when it comes to lending a helping hand. See how Saddlebrook and Standing Bear Elementary kids are giving back to the less fortunate. And he's a former South High Packer. How city leaders are honoring Marlin the Magician. That and more as we put the spotlight on OPS. Hi, I'm Darren Newsen with the Omaha Public Schools Office of District Communications. Thank you for joining us for this first edition of The Spotlight, where we bring you a look at all the exciting things happening around the district. Benson JROTC students take great pride when they have the opportunity to honor all military servicemen and women on Veterans Day. Every year, they travel to businesses throughout the city of Omaha to honor employees. Here's their special presentation at the Lincoln Financial Group.
Forward, march!
For the fourth year in a row, the Benson JROTC joins the Lincoln Financial Group on Veterans Day. The Benson Color Guard, Saber Team, and Choir pay tribute to all the military men and women who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. First Sergeant Daniel Falcon, the Benson Army Instructor, prepares, trains, and leads this group of high school cadets. Through patriotic music and the presentation of flags to employees at the Lincoln Financial Group, the words "Thank You for Your Service" are quietly spoken to each veteran. Falcon, a teacher for 16 years, is also a veteran. He served in the military for 24 years and survived three war zones. Now Falcon is taking his experience and passing along important values onto students like Sabrina Carmichael. Culinary arts students are putting what they've learned to practice. In a unique dining expo, the first of its kind, they put their cooking skills to the As the melodic tunes of jazz music play, Career Center chefs host their very first executive dining experience.
I've been to a lot of high schools, and I've never seen anything as trespassing as...
A special invitation brought out more than a dozen members in the community, including a metro community college and staff at Omaha Public Schools.
Today's serving consisted of a layered cucumber salad, stuffed mushroom, balut vent. The entrees consisted of a pan-seared chicken breast, potato lionaise, and braised bok choy that was served with garnish of shiitake mushrooms and a pan sauce. You're responsible for everything that happens and doesn't happen on that table.
Under the direction of Chef Berthidia Berry, these Career Center students showcased their cooking skills seasoning and serving every meal to perfection.
I made the seared salmon over a toasted bread with a side of potato sauce. I used a garlic, onion, and capers, and then all, you just cut those up and pound the garlic out, and then you pan-fry it with all the salmon.
This French little appetizer here is to die for.
Like Omaha Central senior Jamie, each student has a dish or a role they must fulfill.
It's a learning experience. It's so much fun. Like, I come every day, I'm like, oh, I want to come today.
And the last anticipated item on the menu, the European Invasion.
The dessert was awesome.
You all want to give them a round of applause for the great competition. Thank you all, and we look forward to you coming on the second dining experience, and that will be the second semester.
OPS kids are learning the importance of giving back to the community. Just in time for the holiday season, Saddlebrook and Standing Bear Elementary collect food and clothing items for families in need.
So, they picked up from all the classrooms and were weighing it, and for every 40 pounds, we consider that a full box, and they're, they have a competition to see how many boxes they can collect. About 24 pounds. Top three classes get a popcorn party. The kids, you know, being able to bring in the food, that is just a lot more meaningful, and they get involved in it, and, you know, counting and weighing and all that stuff is really, has an impact on them.
We're doing a clothing job to protect people over the winter that don't have as much money in our need and need protection. It makes me feel proud that I'm helping someone in need.
I thought it was a good idea.
I thought it was a good idea because people who didn't have clothing could have clothing.
This is our first time doing a clothing drive for the Open Door Mission. Student Council sponsors, we just thought this would be a great idea. And we kind of chose Open Door Mission because there's a variety of people, so we have a variety of clothing here, from adults to, you know, to children too.
The Saddle Brook Elementary students collected more than 1,000 pounds of food. Standing Bear donated more than 1,000 pounds of clothes to those in need. And McMillan Magnet Center students are taking what they've learned in the classroom into the community. In a unique program, eighth grade students showcase their architect skills.
At the top, on the side, all the way through, and the other side to the top.
No matter what grade level you're in at King Science Magnet Center, biology takes on a whole new meaning. See what I found when I recently walked into the classroom.
This is the eighth year that Creighton University has come to King Science to teach about the human body. They've come in and they have four different stations that the fifth graders are rotating around to learn about the human body.
So we're just gonna rotate now, so the heart, we're gonna go to the eyes. Eyes, you guys are gonna go to the lungs over here, and lungs are gonna go to the bones, and bones, you guys will go to the heart.
This is technically a seventh grade content, but it kind of gets them comfortable with kind of the basics of it, so once they get to seventh grade, they're a little bit more familiar with some of the basic terms and concepts involved with those different body parts.
OPS is made up of a diverse population of students. At Lewis and Clark Middle School, kids who speak English as a second language are getting a firsthand look at Nebraska prairie life. Through the eyes of 11 Lewis and Clark Middle School students, the beauty of tall grasses and wildflowers are captured in one snap.
We actually had, the UNO photographer came in and actually taught the kids how to take photos.
For the fourth year in a row, Lewis and Clark ESL teacher Barb Brimmerman in UNO's Literacy and Learning Class teamed up this semester to take a photography trip at Glacier Creek Preserve in Bennington, Nebraska.
They have to not only take the photo, they have to know why they took it, they have to analyze it, they have to write a caption which uses descriptive language, and then they have to use, choose one adjective, and then they have to come up with 35 other synonyms for that adjective.
I chose dazzling, 'cause it's beautiful and bright at the same time, just like the sun, and the blue sky is just wonderful.
The concept is to give kids access to higher-level vocabulary and create a connection to nature. For Farhio, a native of Kenya, it's been an unforgettable journey.
My photo, I chose it 'cause it shows all the different parts of the prairie life. As you can see, over there is like dead grass, and there's tall grass, and there's also a tree, like, there's trees and prairie life and short grass.
In a class presentation, the students share what they found. Then, in a gallery walk, the public gets a glimpse of the Nebraska prairies through the eyes of international students. While every student is considered a winner, by popular vote, five photographs are chosen as top favorites. The city of Omaha is honoring a former Packer who's helped break the barrier with minority athletes. Marlon Briscoe was the first Black starting quarterback in the National Football League. In honor of his accomplishments, a street near a South High School now bears his name. The Career Center's Arianna was there for the official unveiling.
I'm not a hero, but I'm glad that I could do some things to influence the young people. But they might want to be able to say they can do it too.
Growing up on the South Side, everybody heard about Marlon Briscoe. He's a few years older than me, but more than just being a great athlete, we knew he was a hard worker, he was a teammate, a team man, I should say, a team player, represented his family well, and was someone we just looked up to.
Words can't say enough how I feel about this day.
I mean, you know, he could run the fastest, he could jump the highest, he could throw the ball the farthest, you know, he was a neighborhood hero.
It's just a mind-boggling experience for me. You know, this dedication is not about me. It's about Omaha, and particularly South Omaha, particularly South High. Because that's how I got there. I couldn't travel through those doors without it.
Marlon can do it all. Marlon the Magician. Let's go.
Well, that's all for this edition of The Spotlight. If you'd like to see this program again, watch for it on the Knowledge Network. You can also see it on our YouTube channel, just do a search for OPS Web TV. Thank you for joining us, and see you next time. In this edition of The Spotlight, there are many ways to honor veterans who have risked their lives to serve this country. Find out how a group of Benson JROTC students are saluting those military men and women. Plus, they're eager and cheerful when it comes to lending a helping hand. See how Saddle Brook and Standing Bear Elementary kids are giving back to the less fortunate. And he's a former South High Packer. How city leaders are honoring Marlon the Magician. That and more as we put the spotlight on OPS. Hi, I'm Darren Newsen with the Omaha Public Schools Office of District Communications. Thank you for joining us for this first edition of The Spotlight, where we bring you a look at all the exciting things happening around the district. Benson JROTC students take great pride when they have the opportunity to honor all military servicemen and women on Veterans Day. Every year, they travel to businesses throughout the city of Omaha to honor employees. Here's their special presentation at the Lincoln Financial Group.
Forward, march!
For the fourth year in a row, the Benson JROTC joins the Lincoln Financial Group on Veterans Day. The Benson Color Guard, Saber Team, and Choir pay tribute to all the military men and women who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. First Sergeant Daniel Falcon, the Benson Army Instructor prepares, trains, and leads this group of high school cadets. Through patriotic music and the presentation of flags to employees at the Lincoln Financial Group, the words "Thank You for Your Service" are quietly spoken to each veteran. Falcon, a teacher for 16 years, is also a veteran. He served in the military for 24 years and survived three war zones. Now Falcon is taking his experience and passing along important values onto students like Sabrina Carmichael. Culinary Arts students are putting what they've learned to practice. In a unique dining expo, the first of its kind, they put their cooking skills to the test. As the melodic tunes of jazz music play, Career Center chefs host their very first executive dining experience.
I've been to a lot of high schools, and I've never seen anything as trespassing as this.
A special invitation brought out more than a dozen members in the community, including a metro community college and staff at Omaha Public Schools.
Today's serving consisted of layered cucumber salad, stuffed mushroom, valuette. The entrees consisted of a pan-seared chicken breast, potato lionaise, and braised bok choy that was served with garnish of shiitake mushrooms and a pan sauce. You're responsible for everything that happens and doesn't happen on that table.
Under the direction of Chef Berthidia Berry, these Career Center students showcased their cooking skills seasoning and serving every meal to perfection.
I made the seared salmon over a toasted bread with a side of potato sauce. I used garlic, onion, and capers, and then all you just cut those up and pound the garlic out, and then you pan-fry them with all the salmon.
This French little appetizer here is to die for.
Like Omaha Central Senior Jamie, each student has a dish or a role they must fulfill.
It's a learning experience. It's so much fun. Like, I come every day. I'm like, well, I want to come today.
And the last anticipated item on the menu, the European invasion.
The dessert was awesome.
You all want to give them a round of applause for the great competition. Thank you all, and we look forward to you coming on the second dining experience, and that will be the second semester.
OPS kids are learning the importance of giving back to the community. Just in time for the holiday season, Saddle Brook and Standing Bear Elementary collect food and clothing items for families in need.
So they picked up from all the classrooms and were weighing it, and for every 40 pounds, we consider that a full box, and they're, they have a competition to see how many boxes they can collect.
About 24 pounds.
Top three classes get a popcorn party.
We filled 30 boxes so far.
It's really fun.
The kids, you know, being able to bring in the food, that is just a lot more meaningful, and they get involved in it, and, you know, counting and weighing and all that stuff is really, has an impact on them.
We're doing a clothing drive to protect people over the winter that don't have as much money and are in need and need protection. It makes me feel proud that I'm helping someone in need.
I thought it was a good idea because people who didn't have clothing could have clothing.
This is our first time doing a clothing drive for the Open Door Mission. Student Council sponsors, we just thought this would be a great idea. And we kind of chose Open Door Mission because there's a variety of people, so we have a variety of clothing here, from adults to, you know, to children too.
The Saddle Brook Elementary students collected more than 1,000 pounds of food. Standing Bear donated more than 1,000 pounds of clothes to those in need. And McMillan Magnet Center students are taking what they've learned in the classroom into the community. In a unique program, eighth grade students showcase their architect skills.
At the top, on the side, all the way through, and the other side to the top.
No matter what grade level you're in at King Science Magnet Center, biology takes on a whole new meaning. See what I found when I recently walked into the classroom.
This is the eighth year that Creighton University has come to King Science to teach about the human body. They've come in and they have four different stations that the fifth graders are rotating around to learn about the human body.
So we're just gonna rotate now, so the heart, we're gonna go to the eyes. Eyes, you guys are gonna go to the lungs over here, and lungs are gonna go to the bones, and bones, you guys will go to the heart.
This is technically a seventh grade content, but it kind of gets them comfortable with kind of the basics of it, so once they get to seventh grade, they're a little bit more familiar with some of the basic terms and concepts involved with those different body parts.
OPS is made up of a diverse population of students. At Lewis and Clark Middle School, kids who speak English as a second language are getting a firsthand look at Nebraska prairie life. Through the eyes of 11 Lewis and Clark Middle School students, the beauty of tall grasses and wildflowers are captured in one snap.
We actually had, the UNO photographer came in and actually taught the kids how to take photos.
For the fourth year in a row, Lewis and Clark ESL teacher Barb Brimmerman in UNO's Literacy and Learning Class teamed up this semester to take a photography trip at Glacier Creek Preserve in Bennington, Nebraska.
They have to not only take the photo, they have to know why they took it, they have to analyze it, they have to write a caption which uses descriptive language, and then they have to use, choose one adjective, and then they have to come up with 35 other synonyms for that adjective.
I chose dazzling, 'cause it's beautiful and bright at the same time, just like the sun, and the blue sky is just wonderful.
The concept is to give kids access to higher-level vocabulary and create a connection to nature. For Farhio, a native of Kenya, it's been an unforgettable journey.
My photo, I chose it 'cause it shows all the different parts of the prairie life. As you can see, over there is like dead grass, and there's tall grass. As you can see, over there is like dead grass and there's tall grass. And there's also a tree, like there's trees and prairie life and short grass.
In a class presentation, the students share what they found. Then in a gallery walk, the public gets a glimpse of the Nebraska prairies through the eyes of international students. While every student is considered a winner, by popular vote, five photographs are chosen as top favorites. The city of Omaha is honoring a former Packer who's helped break the barrier with minority athletes. Marlon Briscoe was the first Black starting quarterback in the National Football League. In honor of his accomplishments, a street near South High School now bears his name. The Career Center's Arianna was there for the official unveiling.
I'm not a hero, but I'm glad that I could do some things to influence the young people that they might want to be able to say they can do it too.
Growing up on the South Side, everybody heard about Marlon Briscoe. He's a few years older than me, but more than just being a great athlete, we knew he was a hard worker, he was a teammate, a team man, I should say, a team player. Represented his family well and was someone we just looked up to.
Words can't say enough how I feel about this day.
I mean, you know, he could run the fastest, he could jump the highest, he could throw the ball the farthest. You know, he was a neighborhood hero.
It's just a mind-boggling experience for me. You know, this dedication is not about me. It's about Omaha, and particularly South Omaha, particularly South High. Because that's how I got there. I couldn't travel through those doors without it.
Marlon can do it all. Marlon the Magician. Briscoe.
Well, that's all for this edition of The Spotlight. If you'd like to see this program again, watch for it on the Knowledge Network. You can also see it on our YouTube channel. Just do a search for OPS Web TV. Thank you for joining us and see you next time. In this edition of The Spotlight, there are many ways to honor veterans who have risked their lives to serve this country. Find out how a group of Benson JROTC students are saluting those military men and women. Plus, they're eager and cheerful when it comes to lending a helping hand. See how Saddle Brook and Standing Bear Elementary kids are giving back to the less fortunate. And he's a former South High Packer. House City leaders are honoring Marlon the Magician. That and more as we put the spotlight on OPS. Hi, I'm Darren Newsen with the Omaha Public Schools Office of District Communications. Thank you for joining us for this first edition of The Spotlight, where we bring you a look at all the exciting things happening around the district. Benson JROTC students take great pride when they have the opportunity to honor all military servicemen and women on Veterans Day. Every year, they travel to businesses throughout the city of Omaha to honor employees. Here's their special presentation at the Lincoln Financial Group.
Forward, march!
For the fourth year in a row, the Benson JROTC joins the Lincoln Financial Group on Veterans Day.
Order, service.
The Benson Color Guard, Saber Team, and Choir pay tribute to all the military men and women who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. First Sergeant Daniel Falcon, the Benson Army Instructor prepares, trains, and leads this group of high school cadets. Through patriotic music and the presentation of flags to employees at the Lincoln Financial Group, the words "Thank you for your service" are quietly spoken to each veteran. Falcon, a teacher for sixteen years, is also a veteran. He served in the military for twenty-four years and survived three war zones. Now Falcon is taking his experience and passing along important values onto students like Sabrina Carmichael.
Order, arms. Post.
Culinary arts students are putting what they've learned to practice. In a unique dining expo, the first of its kind, they put their cooking skills to the test. As the melodic tunes of jazz music play, Career Center chefs host their very first executive dining experience.
I've been to a lot of high schools and I've never seen anything as trustless as this.
A special invitation brought out more than a dozen members in the community, including a metro community college and staff at Omaha Public Schools.
Today's serving consisted of layered cucumber salad, stuffed mushroom, balutin. The entrees consisted of a pan-seared chicken breast, potato lionaise, and braised bok choy. That was served with garnish of shiitake mushrooms and a pan sauce. You're responsible for everything that happens and doesn't happen on that table.
Under the direction of Chef Berthidia Berry, these Career Center students showcased their cooking skills, seasoning, and serving every meal to perfection.
I made the seared salmon over a toasted bread with a side of potato sauce. I used garlic, onion, and capers. And then you just cut those up and pound the garlic out and then you pan-fried it with all the salmon.
This French little appetizer here is to die for.
Like Omaha Central Senior Jamie, each student has a dish or a role they must fulfill.
It's a learning experience. It's so much fun. Like, I come every day. I'm like, well, I want to come today.
And the last anticipated item on the menu: the European invasion.
The dessert was awesome.
You all want to give them a round of applause for the great competition. Thank you all, and we look forward to you coming on the second dining experience, and that will be the second semester.
OPS kids are learning the importance of giving back to the community. Just in time for the holiday season, Saddle Brook and Standing Bear Elementary collect food and clothing items for families in need.
So they picked up from all the classrooms and were weighing it. And for every forty pounds, we consider that a full box. And they have a competition to see how many boxes they can collect.
About twenty-four pounds.
Top three classes get a popcorn party.
We filled thirty boxes so far.
It's really fun.
The kids, you know, being able to bring in the food, that is just a lot more meaningful. And they get involved in it and, you know, counting and weighing and all that stuff is really, has an impact on them.
We're doing a clothing drive to protect people over the winter that don't have as much money in our need and need protection. It makes me feel proud that I'm helping someone in need.
I thought it was a good idea because people who didn't have clothing could have clothing.
This is our first time doing a clothing drive for the Open Door Mission. Student Council sponsors, we just thought this would be a great idea. And we kind of chose Open Door Mission because there's a variety of people. So we have a variety of clothing here, from adults to, you know, to children too.
The Saddle Brook Elementary students collected more than one thousand pounds of food. Standing Bear donated more than a thousand pounds of clothes to those in need. And McMillan Magnet Center students are taking what they've learned in the classroom into the community. In a unique program, eighth grade students showcase their architect skills.
The top and the side all the way through, and the other side to the top.
And we worked in over a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That allowed us to utilize the space for two, four years. We also were able to supply it.
No matter what grade level you're in at King Science Magnet Center, biology takes on a whole new meaning. See what I found when I recently walked into the classroom.
This is the eighth year that Creighton University has come to King Science to teach about the human body. They've come in and they have four different stations that the fifth graders are rotating around to learn about the human body. So we're just going to rotate now. So the heart, we're going to go to the eyes. Eyes, you guys are going to go to the lungs over here. And lungs are going to go to the bones. And bones, you guys will go to the mouth. This is technically a seventh grade content, but it kind of gets them comfortable with kind of the basics of it. So once they get to seventh grade, they're a little bit more familiar with some of the basic terms and concepts involved with those different body parts.
OPS is made up of a diverse population of students. At Lewis and Clark Middle School, kids who speak English as a second language are getting a firsthand look at Nebraska prairie life. Through the eyes of eleven Lewis and Clark Middle School students, the beauty of tall grasses and wildflowers are captured in one snap.
We actually had, the UNO photographer came in and actually taught the kids how to take photos.
For the fourth year in a row, Lewis and Clark ESL teacher Barb Brimmerman and UNO's literacy and learning class teamed up this semester to take a photography trip at Glacier Creek Preserve in Bennington, Nebraska.
They have to not only take the photo, they have to know why they took it. They have to analyze it. They have to write a caption which uses descriptive language. And then they have to use, choose one adjective. And then they have to come up with thirty-five other synonyms for that adjective.
I chose dazzling because it's beautiful and bright at the same time, just like the sun. And the blue sky is just wonderful.
The concept is to give kids access to higher-level vocabulary and create a connection to nature. For Farhio, a native of Kenya, it's been an unforgettable journey.
My photo, I chose it because it shows all the different parts of the prairie life. As you can see, over there is like dead grass and there's tall grass. And there's also a tree, like there's trees and prairie life and short grass.
In a class presentation, the students share what they found. Then in a gallery walk, the public gets a glimpse of the Nebraska prairies through the eyes of international students. While every student is considered a winner, by popular vote, five photographs are chosen as top favorites. The city of Omaha is honoring a former Packer who's helped break the barrier with minority athletes. Marlon Briscoe was the first Black starting quarterback in the National Football League. In honor of his accomplishments, a street near South High School now bears his name. The Career Center's Arianna was there for the official unveiling.
I'm not a hero, but I'm glad that I could do some things to influence the young people that they might want to be able to say they can do it too.
Growing up on the South Side, everybody heard about Marlon Briscoe. He's a few years older than me, but more than just being a great athlete, we knew he was a hard worker, he was a teammate, a team man, I should say, a team player. Represented his family well and was someone we just looked up to.
Words can't say enough how I feel about this day.
I mean, you know, he could run the fastest, he could jump the highest, he could throw the ball the farthest. You know, he was a neighborhood hero.
It's just a mind-boggling experience for me. You know, this dedication is not about me. It's about Omaha, and particularly South Omaha, particularly South High. Because that's how I got there. I couldn't travel through those doors without it.
Marlon can do it all. Marlon the Magician. Briscoe.
Well, that's all for this edition of The Spotlight. If you'd like to see this program again, watch for it on the Knowledge Network. You can also see it on our YouTube channel. Just do a search for OPS Web TV. Thank you for joining us and see you next time. In this edition of The Spotlight, there are many ways to honor veterans who have risked their lives to serve this country. Find out how a group of Benson JROTC students are saluting those military men and women. Plus, they're eager and cheerful when it comes to lending a helping hand. See how Saddle Brook and Standing Bear Elementary kids are giving back to the less fortunate. And he's a former South High Packer. House City leaders are honoring Marlon the Magician. That and more as we put the spotlight on OPS. Hi, I'm Darren Newsen with the Omaha Public Schools Office of District Communications. Thank you for joining us for this first edition of The Spotlight, where we bring you a look at all the exciting things happening around the district. Benson JROTC students take great pride when they have the opportunity to honor all military servicemen and women on Veterans Day. Every year, they travel to businesses throughout the city of Omaha to honor employees. Here's their special presentation at the Lincoln Financial Group.
Forward, march!
For the fourth year in a row, the Benson JROTC joins the Lincoln Financial Group on Veterans Day. The Benson Color Guard, Saber Team, and Choir pay tribute to all the military men and women who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. and women who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. First Sergeant Daniel Falcon, the Benson Army Instructor prepares, trains and leads this group of high school cadets. Through patriotic music and the presentation of flags to employees at the Lincoln Financial Group, the words "Thank You For Your Service" are quietly spoken to each veteran. Falcon, a teacher for sixteen years, is also a veteran. He served in the military for twenty-four years and survived three war zones. Now Falcon is taking his experience and passing along important values onto students like Sabrina Carmichael. Culinary arts students are putting what they've learned to practice. In a unique dining expo, the first of its kind, they put their cooking skills to the test. As the melodic tunes of jazz music play, Career Center chefs host their very first executive dining experience.
I've been to a lot of high schools and I've never seen anything as crusty as this.
A special invitation brought out more than a dozen members in the community, including a metro community college and staff at Omaha Public Schools.
Today's serving consisted of layered cucumber salad, stuffed mushroom, balutin'. The entrees consisted of a pan-seared chicken breast, potato lionaise and braised bok choy that was served with garnish of shiitake mushrooms and a pan sauce. You're responsible for everything that happens and doesn't happen on that table.
Under the direction of Chef Berthidia Berry, these Career Center students showcased their cooking skills, seasoning and serving every meal to perfection.
I made the seared salmon over a toasted bread with a side of potato sauce. I used garlic, onion and capers and then you just cut those up and pound the garlic out and then you pan fry it with all of the salmon.
This French little appetizer here is to die for.
Like Omaha Central Senior Jamie, each student has a dish or a role they must fulfill.
It's a learning experience. It's so much fun. Like I come every day, I'm like, well, I want to come today.
And the last anticipated item on the menu, the European Invasion.
The dessert was awesome.
If you all want to give them a round of applause for the great job that they did, thank you all and we look forward to you coming on the second dining experience and that will be the second semester.
OPS kids are learning the importance of giving back to the community. Just in time for the holiday season, Saddle Brook and Standing Bear Elementary collect food and clothing items for families in need.
So they picked up from all the classrooms and were weighing it and for every forty pounds, we consider that a full box and they have a competition to see how many boxes they can collect.
About twenty-four pounds.
Top three classes get a popcorn party.
We filled thirty boxes so far.
It's really fun.
The kids, you know, being able to bring in the food, that is just a lot more meaningful and they get involved in it and, you know, counting and weighing and all that stuff is really, has an impact on them.
We're doing a clothing drive to protect people over the winter that don't have as much money in our need and need protection. It makes me feel proud that I'm helping someone in need.
I thought it was a good idea because people who didn't have clothing could have clothing.
This is our first time of doing a clothing drive for the Open Door Mission. Student Council sponsors, we just thought this would be a great idea. And we kind of chose Open Door Mission because there's a variety of people, so we have a variety of clothing here from adults to, you know, to children too.
The Saddle Brook Elementary students collected more than 1,000 pounds of food. Standing Bear donated more than 1,000 pounds of clothes to those in need. And McMillan Magnet Center students are taking what they've learned in the classroom into the community. In a unique program, eighth grade students showcase their architect skills.
At the top and the side all the way through and the other side to the top.
No matter what grade level you're in at King Science Magnet Center, biology takes on a whole new meaning. See what I found when I recently walked into the classroom.
This is the eighth year that Creighton University has come to King Science to teach about the human body. They've come in and they have four different stations that the fifth graders are rotating around to learn about the human body.
So we're just going to rotate now. So the heart, we're going to go to the eyes. Eyes, you guys are going to go to the lungs over here and lungs are going to go to the bones and bones, you guys will go to the heart.
This is technically a seventh grade content, but it kind of gets them comfortable with kind of the basics of it. So once they get to seventh grade, they're a little bit more familiar with some of the basic terms and concepts involved with those different body parts.
OPS is made up of a diverse population of students. At Lewis and Clark Middle School, kids who speak English as a second language are getting a firsthand look at Nebraska Prairie life. Through the eyes of eleven Lewis and Clark Middle School students, the beauty of tall grasses and wildflowers are captured in one snap.
We actually had, the UNO photographer came in and actually taught the kids how to take photos.
For the fourth year in a row, Lewis and Clark ESL teacher Barb Brimmerman in UNO's Literacy and Learning Class teamed up this semester to take a photography trip at Glacier Creek Preserve in Bennington, Nebraska.
They have to not only take the photo, they have to know why they took it, they have to analyze it, they have to write a caption which uses descriptive language and then they have to use, choose one adjective and then they have to come up with thirty-five other synonyms for that adjective.
I chose dazzling because it's beautiful and bright at the same time, just like the sun and the blue skies just wonderful.
The concept is to give kids access to higher level vocabulary and create a connection to nature. For Farhio, a native of Kenya, it's been an unforgettable journey.
My photo, I chose it because it shows all the different parts of the prairie life. As you can see over there is like dead grass and there's tall grass and there's also a tree, like there's trees and prairie life and short grass.
In a class presentation, the students share what they found. Then in a gallery walk, the public gets a glimpse of the Nebraska Prairies through the eyes of international students. While every student is considered a winner, by popular vote, five photographs are chosen as top favorites. The city of Omaha is honoring a former Packer who's helped break the barrier with minority athletes. Marlon Briscoe was the first black starting quarterback in the National Football League. In honor of his accomplishments, a street near South High School now bears his name. The Career Center's Arianna was there for the official unveiling.
I'm not a hero, but I'm glad that I could do some things to influence the young people.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 9:21 PM. Let the record reflect, the meeting is adjourned at 9:21 PM.